Okay, the hour is 5:02. We'd like to get the Planning Board meeting of June 5th, 2025 in motion. Persons who wish to view the meeting at the appropriate website can do so or join us by phone. Information's on the city website for joining us remotely. So first item of business is calling the meeting to order, which I will do in introduction of Planning Board members and staff. To my far left, we have Eric, who is our senior planner. And hiding over there next to him is David Rosen, Sean Henry, Greg Catimatory, our planning director. I'm Rick Noonan, the Planning Board Chair. Our vice chair is Jane Ramsden, Doug Cook, and Steve Yost. Beverly, she's hiding as well. Thank you. I thought she was still getting her beach sticker. Next, under the agenda this evening is A&R's site plan reviews and preliminary subdivision plans. This is an approval not required. A&R plans submitted by Chris McCarthy to buy property at 86 Dennison Street, Sessors Map, 115 Lot 16. And pro se this evening? All by yourself, you're not paying anybody to talk? So just your name and address for the record.
Chris McCarthy, 166 Bray Street in Gloucester. Very familiar with this property. I was in front of the Planning Board in 2002 and did a, I believe it was a pork chop lot out in back, land at 90 Dennison Street. And there's a plan, I submitted a plan back then, and it had, it's in your files. This, it's got a, the property itself has a a strange front yard, a strange property line where the right of way extends into and off of the actual pavement by a significant amount. Having my title attorney sort of research how that came about went back into the 1800s and it still was as a right of way back then. And also in 1909, there was also a plan. I've got a copy of the plan here if anybody would like to see it. Otherwise, it's pretty straightforward. Going, my goal is to, there's an old barn that's sort of falling down right next to the brook, and my plan is to replicate and move it back from the front yard from where it is right now and to build a new home there, single family. If you have any questions.
Yeah, we're just trying to believe if that was really from 1909.
So Chris, that, the garage building that's in that right of way is not part of the property?
It's on the right of way. It's going to be removed. It's a title, it's a titled issue right now.
Did you say that you're gonna, you're picking up the barn, are you taking, raising?
No, it's, it's, part of it's on pilings and part of it's the floor. It's actually a store, it's a, it's a storage barn and workshop and it's the floor, if you walk in there, it's, it's just, it's not structurally safe. Yeah, it's, well, it is to hold the stuff in there, but trying to, trying to repair it or do anything. It doesn't have a foundation under most of it. And it's, you take a look at it, you'll see it's leaning and it's rotting out in place.
So I'm just curious, looking at the plan, where it shows the brook on this plan?
Yep.
And then it shows that parcel B. Which is it where that waterfall is coming down? Is that on parcel B or is that that?
That's, that's, the wall, the, where the waterfall is, is on the right of way. It used, there used to be back in the late 1600s, from what I can gather, it used to be part of Norwood's Mill on the lower part of it. And in a lot of the, the right of way there was the banking. A lot of the property was, it was a, it was a, there was a mill dam there. And I'm not sure exactly where the mill was located, over the front of it, towards the street or in back.
But where that, where this shows on this plan as the, as the brook, is that the actual, is that the location of the, of that waterfall right here? It comes, so it's actually on your property?
It's part of it is, yes, correct. Well, it's out here on the right of way where the waterfall is.
Got it, okay, all right, thank you.
So how is this managed when your frontage is all on a right of way, not on a street? And anyway, whose right of way is it?
It's a private right of way. It's just, it's owned by the subutters and really the butter on that side is the property. Is a property that I'd be.
So when I think of a right of way, I think someone has a lot. And you know, person one has a lot and person two has a right of way somehow over that lot. So why is the, is the lot line shown like?
I'm trying, I had my title guy go back as far, as far as he could.
Who, who owns the lot that says R O W with existing driveway and garage to be removed? Who owns that?
It's a, it's a, it's a private right of way.
I know, that's not helping though. Someone else owns it, so that means you don't have frontage on a street, though.
It has accessible frontage onto a right of way, on a public right of way.
You just said it was a private right of way.
No, the public is, from, getting from the, from the, from the public right of way going over the private right of way into the lot. Like the lot next door that I used to own at 90 Dennison had to do the same exact thing there when I built a house. They're the same.
Oh, I see. So you have a right, okay, so you're saying that, okay. So why doesn't this plan show who owns that? And I'm still thinking, is there frontage on a street, Greg? Doesn't an A&R have to have frontage on a street?
So I thought that was depicting the variable width of Dennison Street, but it's not?
It is. It is. But couldn't find the description of a, if you look at the Dennison Street, which coming off of Holly Street and also coming down from Gooseco, from Washington Street is a public way. And it used to go right up through Bennett Street. And also Dennison used to go up into Dogtown as a public way. At some point in the 1800s, they built the walls. There's no, there's no, the only, there's a taking of Dennison Street in 1894 that went up only to Bennett Street from Washington Street. And it shows the outline of continuous taking just from Washington Street to.
From 1894.
Chris, could you just speak into the mic? Or somebody borrow a mic?
So it doesn't specify separated as being, it doesn't, it doesn't separate it as being a public versus private right of way. And the most that we could gather from the deed transfers was that it was a private right of way. And that's the way it was proposed in 2002 when it came in front with a Form A for 90 Dennison and 86 Dennison.
So are you saying that the precedent for creating 90, there was a precedent for using Dennison Street that shows the same right of way when, when 90 Dennison was created?
I believe so. I think it's, it's either a public way all the way through or it's a private right of way that abuts the public right of way.
But if it's a private right of way, who owns it?
It would be, it'd be the property that I'd be building on because it's on that side of the street.
So does, I mean, it seems to me that you'd want to establish legal rights to it and revise your, and revise your lot to bring it to the public right of way by incorporating this private right of way into your lot. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it was, it was, the process of having to do that and have, going through and getting it certified through the city is taking it a public way. I'm sure that the city might not want to take it as a public way.
Right?
I believe so. I don't, I think it might have been a backup. The only thing I can think of is where there's, you have Holly Street coming into Dennison Street and then zigzagging going up Dennison Street towards Dogtown. Is that it might have been a place where the public was able to back whatever they had and go up through there. And it, you know, it just had the right of ways. Back in the 1800s, they were just determined by the stone walls and the barriers that were there.
Yeah, on this, on this 1908 plan, it says Archie. So I feel like someone did own it at some point. Even, yeah. Right, isn't it right there? Okay, let's see.
So Greg, do you have any background on this?
I don't, I thought that it was defining the right of way for Dennison Street. In which case, it's just oddly shaped very wide in that location and that the frontage was on Dennison.
So can we get some sort of confidence in the fact that this R O W? Because if this is a public right of way, then someone had their garage on a public right of way or has their garage on a public right of way. But if it's a private right of way, that's different as well, so.
Yeah, but there's no adverse possession with public property, so, but the intention is to remove the.
Yeah, no, I get it. So whose garage is it?
It was number 86 Dennison Street.
Which is lot 2A or, sorry, it's lot 2B? The guy that has that, whoever's the owner of that house?
2A.
2A, okay. Is this something our city solicitor could help us with or?
I certainly can't give you an answer right now. I mean, but I'm looking at this plan and it looks like it's, I mean, it's labeled as part of the right of way, but if we're saying it's potentially a private right of way, is that to gain access to Dennison Street?
Yeah, it, it's like, it's like.
So does the deed for, for, for Map 115 Lot 16 refer to this right of way?
Yes, it would refer to as Dennison Street, by the wall on Dennison Street.
Who did this plan, actually?
Which one?
This.
Tonight's?
Who did the survey? Sorry?
Kurt Benson.
What did he think about it?
I think you can access it from, whether it's a private or public, you can access what's going to be built there from a safety standpoint. You can get off the right of way regardless if it's public, private, or private, public. It's, you can get there safely.
I know, I'm just worried.
It existed prior to subdivision. I mean, that's.
Is that what it says in the A&R? Doesn't it say frontage on a street in existence? Or frontage on a way in existence?
Yeah, prior to subdivision control law, that's, that's deemed adequate for this board to say, yes, it's adequate.
I think that, given that you created the pork chop lot on 90 Dennison whenever that was created, that this must have, the same issue must have come up, right? Because that's, that's, that, the frontage on that lot is, is also separated by that right of way on Dennison, right?
Correct, yeah.
So is there a way that we can, you know, was there any determination made at that point? Obviously, that, that lot was allowed. I don't have any problem with the, the A&R lot being created if it in fact has frontage on a way, on a public way. Right, but it's, it's hard to understand it given this layout.
Yeah, no, I understand that definitely, but I think the same, it went through the same, went through the same process through the Planning Board where the one on 90 Dennison, there was a gap, a little bit smaller gap, but there was a private right of way. A private right of way prior to. The only reason we just couldn't find anything in the public. I went through the city's, the archives to try to find. That was the only plan that I could get through the engineering that had a taking because the road has been, was so old.
I think it would make sense to ask Suzanne Egan to weigh in and give her the deed or any deeds that you have. I'm not questioning the survey and I'm not questioning, I mean, as David said, it's perfectly fine with an A&R as long as it does have frontage on a way. And I don't feel qualified to determine that.
I think another issue here is if it's private and you don't technically own it with this lot, then in order for you to have frontage on Dennison, you need to have an easement over it for the, for the owner of that property. That's the problem about it being private. Either you own it, not you, but your lot owns it.
The lot, yes.
Or someone else owns it.
Well, the lot, this lot owns it with rights of others to use it.
Yeah, but this, this plan is interesting because it shows it as Dennis Street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's all one thing as Dennis, which I, that was what I was kind of assuming was happening.
Right, so that's why it's, if it was a public right of way, but if it was, then someone built their garage in a public right of way.
No, it was probably already there.
Yeah.
The garage was existing, I'm sure, right?
Yeah, the garage is, is in.
It's all part of the old stuff.
That through the Planning Board, it says Dennison Street all the way over to the wall.
Yeah.
It could as well be, you know, public, but it's, we could not find any certification that it was, that it was public. And my title attorney really said that that's, that it would have to be private if there was no, if there was, you know, if, if the area that was used by this lot was, was used by this property, you know, to get to the paved right of way.
I mean, this, this plan, which was through the Planning Board, has it, has it as part of the street? 1985, that is.
You'd have to go into like this, we tried, I tried going back and got back to about 1845 and then all of the ownership went through probates and you couldn't find anything else that referred to by the street, by Dennison Street. It didn't, how it was created, so. You know, both times it was in front of here to do a Form A, it was, it was seen as being a.
No taxes being paid on that parcel, so.
Just on the barn.
I'd ask that legally, there's no evidence that it's a tract? That that triangular piece is a tract as opposed to an actual legal lot?
It's not a tract.
Well, if it's not a tract, I guess the, you're splitting the lot, right? Isn't that what this is about?
Yes, correct, yeah.
And so the northern part of the lot has street frontage, right?
Yeah, well.
Well, no, it doesn't have street frontage.
Every, every one of the, every, the three, would be the three lots, 80, 86, 88, and 90 have the same issue with, it has a gap, whether it's, the public goes back to the walls that exist there and there's a private on, on the, on the street side of it or it's, the public goes all the way back to the walls.
Can I ask Greg about this? If these are considered legal lots, then why can't we just assume that this tract is, I mean, that this intervening property is part of the public right of way?
Again, is that the current submission there? Okay, so, so what's labeled as, as a right of way and this, you know, the lines around Dennison Street do not look particularly, there's no geometry associated with it. So, so what's between, you know, it's a little bit narrower at, at the, for the, what's proposed to be Lot 2A. It's much, you know, closer, the lot line bounding the front of it is much closer to the paved way of Dennison Street. But again, there's just inconsistency in the public record as to whether it's a part of the Dennison right of way or not. If you hadn't said something, I would have made the same assumption based on the past filings that, that right of way was just kind of an expanded Dennison Street.
Yeah.
Oddly shaped, the frontage would be derived from the bounds of what's proposed for Lot 2B. But I really can't provide much of an answer where you have basically double stacked right of ways. And the traveled way is Dennison Street, which is public.
What do you think we should do? Have Suzanne Egan take a look at it and just give us?
I'm, we, I certainly can't make a determination based on it, just, just in terms of what we provide.
Is it unreasonable to ask for, for that to?
I mean, we certainly can ask her to look at it.
Yeah.
I don't.
Sorry.
I think that she'll have it, find it hard to get to a conclusion as to where the public road ends.
Yeah.
And we'd end up just editing this.
If you could just furnish her with the deeds for, or the deed, I guess, for that property or anything you've found. And come back next time, just have her send Greg an email or whatever that she's has confidence that it's not a private, all we care about is it's not owned by somebody else.
No, it's definitely not owned by, it's owned by this lot, if anything, it's a private right of way. But I, again, I, the way that the deed, I can get you a copy of the deed. It references, that's where the property line is on Dennison Street.
On map, our map geo, it looks like there's.
I know.
The more right of way all the way.
Yeah, up Bennett Street, yeah.
Through, yeah. The what?
So it looks like it continues.
It shows.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Right of way all through.
I would, I would assume that it, I would, if I would have guessed, I would say that it's public because, because of the way it's laid out and the way it curls up Bennett Street, the way it goes up Dennison Street, Holly Street, all the walls are there. And I, again, I, but trying, again, I try, I wanted to make sure. I went back as far as I could and in, in the 1800s, it didn't, it stopped referring to it. I would have had to pull some probates to see how it was determined or how it was created.
It's just so odd that the property line takes a jog behind the garage, you know?
Well, the garage was there after the property was, 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 the garage was built by somebody long after the property line was there. I don't know why. But they decided to build it on, on a right of way. But again.
I'll just say this is the third garage that I've seen in right of ways in Gloucester.
Ever or in?
No, I mean, it's.
It's a common, it's a common thing, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I would assume that this is, it might never be able to find out whether it's, if the public did own this.
Let's confirm, have Suzanne confirm as best she can that it's not owned by anybody else. But you're already telling me it's not owned by.
It's been referred, I'll get the deeds as referred to as.
Someone else speak up, I've already made my opinion.
Yes, the, the point is, is that if we can, you know, have guidance from counsel and.
How to approach it, no problem.
I mean, so we're sort of at an impasse at this point, right?
Not a problem.
And, and I think she's probably going to find out the same thing that you've discovered and that we're struggling with is that there is, there is no answer. It's tough to prove a negative, right? So, but a referral from her would help this process, I think.
So can I, can I ask one, one question? If, if it is, say, is a private way, would that, it would have to be connected to the, the public way? Well, how would?
I mean, we, we were just looking and I don't know if somebody wants to share the map geo just to give a sense, right? Of how, I mean, again, the map geo is not a, you know, the determination. It's, it's, it's a representation. But it just looks peculiar.
Oh, yeah. I get those lots.
Yes. Those are your words, not mine.
No.
So you can see it up here.
Yeah, that's Bennett, right? Dennison here.
Yeah, and Bennett is a, is a public way as well.
Right. But the right of way is showing.
All of that, yeah.
I mean, it's, I thought it was like, you know, the public way, variable width.
One of the things in the, on the deed is reading that it has boundaries, this lot has boundaries in this westerly, the south westerly, the southerly, the westerly all refers to boundaries on Dennison Street. So the deed refers to the boundaries on Dennison Street. So if you were to match up the, the deed with these numbers along here, you'd find that that's what they're referring to.
Yeah.
That to me says it's Dennison Street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it looks like lots of other lots are in the same situation with having frontage on that, on that right of way along Dennison.
All, all the way down Dennison, yeah, that's.
I guess if you tear down the barn, you'll figure out who owned it. You're going to go that way, too. If you don't mind, I think it would just make us feel better and.
I just had one other question, just based on your control of where you draw this new lot line, is there a reason that you haven't widened it out so that you can locate the structure without a variance? So you have the, the proposed location of where you'd like to relocate the barn and it looks like it will require a frontage variance? Taken from, is it, is it that dramatic? Okay.
Then why couldn't you move the lot line over so that everything was conforming? The new lot line, I mean.
It's the front yard, it's, because it's our 20, the front yard is three feet. That's, that's where the issue is.
Can you move the image so I can see it better? What we're talking about? Oh, sorry, it was my, my bad. I had expanded it on my computer. Okay, I get it now. Right, but you could move the building back if you had more. You can't move the building back?
I plan.
Oh, because it's, there's a slope?
In front of the Board of Appeals, just, yeah, it just, it goes up.
Okay.
Can quite show it there.
Okay.
It goes very.
Yeah, I actually know exactly where this is, I get it totally.
Yeah.
Okay.
But again, I just couldn't verify that it was public, so I just put down right of way because it was put in there and other multiple plans that came in front of you guys, that's all.
Okay, understood.
No problem.
Sorry to make you make an extra trip to the Planning Board, but we appreciate it.
No problem, thank you.
Crashing Ts and dotting Is, thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
So I guess some motion to continue that to June 26th.
Hold on. So move, wait, we need to. I move that we continue the A&R at 86 Dennison Street to our next scheduled meeting of June 26th. Is that what we said?
Second.
I have a motion by Jane Ramsden, second by Dave Rosen, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda this evening is a common driveway special permit application. In informants with the requirements of Mass General Law 48, Section 9 and 11, the zoning ordinance of the City of Gloucester, Section 1.5.5, 1.
the zoning ordinance of the City of Gloucester, Section 1.5.5, 1.8.3, and 5.21, a common driveway special permit is submitted by Anthony Gigoloni and Mike Fazio, care of Seaside Legal Solutions at 9 and 11 Andrews Court, that serves map 237, lots 49 and 126. And I'm assuming that Seaside Legal Solutions is not at that address. Floor is yours. Just name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Aidan Church. I'm an attorney with Seaside Legal Solutions, address 123 Main Street, Gloucester. If I could be brought in as a panelist, I have a quick presentation for you guys.
And if you don't mind speaking directly into the microphone for us, just thank you.
Yep.
You can move it if it's a little awkward.
So if you'll give me just one moment, I'm just gonna share. Okay, so I'm here tonight talking about 9 to 11 Andrews Court. So the application is for common driveway between said properties. So as you can see on the plan there, the common driveway basically splits the, splits the lot line between 9 and 11. So by way of background, both lots do have sufficient frontage on Andrews Court. These lots were created by A and R Plan endorsed by the Board back in 2023. The relatively narrow front of the lots, combined with that angle, as you can see right there, that makes the, the common driveway appealing rather than trying to provide two separate driveways, one for each property. So here I just have, um, just the site plan for your review. I'm sure that you've already looked at this in detail. Um, I have some closeups. If you have specific questions, I'm happy, happy to go back and review these for you. Just to touch on the legal standards to grant a common driveway, as you know, it's a special permit standard, so it first invokes the Section 1.8.3 seven factor test. Then there are certain conditions that also apply under, um, Section 5.21 of the zoning ordinance. So I'll just go through that seven factor test first. So in terms of the social, economic, and community needs served by the common driveway, this will, it'll allow for four new dwelling units in the city. It'll allow access to, you know, each of these structures in a way that, that just makes sense. The structures need to be set back a little from the street just due to that bottleneck right there at Andrews Court. So the common driveway will allow just a single access to, to access the, the structures just in a, in a spot that makes sense. Um, in terms of traffic flow and safety, there's a safe entrance and egress for what's potentially otherwise a difficult turn if there were, if there were two driveways. And as you can see from the, the hammerheads there, we're providing adequate turnaround on each of the two lots so that cars entering and exiting can pull in forwards and come out forwards rather than trying to back out onto Andrews Court. In terms of adequacy of utilities and public services, water and sewer will be placed in the layout of the common driveway, which will save cost and expense versus, again, trying to bring these in through separate, separate driveways. In terms of neighborhood character and social structure, again, where, where the common driveway allows access to the rear of these two properties. Um, if you, if you look around in the surrounding neighborhood, you'll see that it's not particularly thickly settled despite the fact that it is in the R10. So again, allowing these properties, allowing these structures, the ability to be set back on these lots keeps with the, keeps with the neighborhood character in terms of, um, the density. In terms of quality of the, qualities of the natural environment, um, as you probably know, to the northwest of these lots, there's a large wetland resource area, um, that's, that's down gradient from, from these lots. So while the driveway, well, the common driveway itself is not in the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction, it is always nice to cut down on, um, impervious surface in what is, you know, an environmentally sensitive area. And as you see on the plan, we are providing, um, a swale to, to catch the drainage off of the, the common driveway. Um, it also allows the, the structures to, to site in a, in a location that minimizes wetland, uh, impact. In terms of fiscal impacts, again, they're less, it's less expensive for the applicant to install um, just one single driveway rather than separate driveways for each lot. And finally, in terms of flooding and flood, flooding and flood damage, this area is not within a FEMA flood zone, so that does not apply here. So then to go through the 5.2.1, oh, sorry, 5.2.1.5 conditions, which are the specific conditions that the Board must find to grant, um, a common driveway special permit. So the first requirement is that, uh, the common driveway can't be used to satisfy frontage. Again, each, each lot does have adequate frontage pursuant to that A and R Plan. And no common driveway shall be extended or connected to any way other than at one point of intersection with the street providing frontage to the development. The common driveway connects only to Andrews Court. Uh, in terms of subsection B, all lots must meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Again, these were created by A and R. Um, you guys generally will not, not allow an A and R to go forward if, for example, the lot lacks adequate size, uh, which these do not. They do, they do abide by all, lots abide by all zoning requirements. The uses will also abide by zoning. And just in terms of the structures, those will be dimensionally conforming as well. I know Greg had previously brought up a question as to parking, where, as you can see on the plan, two of those spots are technically located on, um, what is number seven Andrews Court? So two of the, two of the parking spaces for number nine are located on number seven. But the duplex structure will have garage parking, so we will have adequate parking for that lot. So again, we're connecting to, um, connecting over approved frontage. We have adequate frontage on Andrews Court. So a common driveway can't serve more than two dwelling units per lot, so we're proposing a duplex on each lot. And then there's the requirement that, um, we record basically a covenant that just states that the driveway can't be used for frontage. The driveway won't become the city's responsibility. Each landowner served by the common driveway will be responsible for the common driveway, um, and they will be jointly and severally liable. The plan states that in the notes and also refers to the fact that there will be a covenant recorded. So again, we're happy to record that covenant and we will get it approved by, uh, planning staff prior to recording, of course. For subsection X, sorry, subsection F is similar. It's a, it's a covenant between the, the owner or the developer and the city, which prohibits the sale of the lot, the sale of each lot until the, um, common driveway is constructed according to the specifications. So again, we're happy to, happy to record such a covenant. In terms of subsection G, the common driveway, um, is supposed to be set back a certain amount from either adjacent lot. It's supposed to be set back 25 feet. This common driveway does meet that setback requirement. Um, it's more than 25 feet from either the adjacent property line to the west or to the east. And then finally, subsection H is that the common driveway must be constructed in accordance with the standards and the rules and regulations governing subdivision of land in Gloucester. Here, the common driveway, uh, width at Andrews Court is greater than 20 feet. Uh, we have more than 20 foot paved apron at the, at Andrews Court. As you can see in, in the detail, there's sufficient base gravel and top coating on the driveway. There is sufficient grades throughout the approximately 100 foot common driveway run. Uh, there's sufficient turnaround again on each lot. And ultimately, a stormwater plan needs to be approved by the engineering department prior to any building permits, uh, being pulled. The only question is, um, in relation to, uh, Section 2.5.3D of the Rules and Regulations, which states that the minimum driveway width for a common driveway serving one lot is 12 feet, while the minimum width serving two lots is 25 feet. The issue is that a common driveway by definition in the zoning ordinance serves more than one lot. So the way that we read that requirement is that if the common driveway serves one additional lot above, you know, the ordinary one lot, then that minimum width would be 12. Our proposed driveway is 14, so it would meet it if you read it that way. But if the Board, again, this is, this is your call. But if the Board believes that it is a 25 foot requirement, we will request a waiver, and I can go through the, the waiver standards really quickly as well. So, um, under Section 5.2, to grant a waiver, it must be in the public interest and not inconsistent with subdivision control law. Here, um, the 14 foot common driveway rather than the 25 foot common driveway, it improves, it improves public safety, um, by reducing the number of curb cuts as opposed to, you know, two separate driveways. It reduces the negative visual impact of multiple driveways or, or one wider driveway. It reduces the negative environmental impacts associated with increased impervious surface. But it's not inconsistent with the subdivision control law. So it's about 100 foot width. It's, it's, sorry, 100 foot length of common driveway. It's a straight shot from Andrews Court. Andrews Court is a relatively, you know, it's a back road compared to, say, Essex Avenue. Somebody turning into the property can see somebody pulling out of the property and yield to them and vice versa. So we don't think that there's going to be a situation where, you know, there's going to be a head-on collision or, or something of that sort. So, you know, ultimately, we think, again, if, if you want to read the ordinance to require the 25 foot, meet the, the standard for a waiver in that respect anyways. And we meet all the conditions for approval, and we also meet the, uh, special permit standard under Section 1.8.3. So thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, I'll stop my share and, and go back if you would like to see any plans or anything of, of that sort.
Good question. What, um, what do you imagine the, the recourse is for someone exiting the driveway and then encountering somebody wanting to, to come in? Would they just have to back up all the way to the, a hammerhead or something?
Sorry, could you, I'm having a little trouble hearing you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wondered what you imagined the recourse would be for someone exiting the driveway in their car, encountering somebody that's entering. Would they just have to back up?
Sure. At, at 14 feet, if it's just two cars, they most likely will be able to pass each other anyways. Um, there's not, you know, there's not a wall on the right side, so, you know, if necessary, there's some room to pull over to the shoulder. But again, I think that the situation where two cars would meet somewhere in the middle is, is pretty unlikely where you have a direct line of sight to, to the street from the, from the, um, from the split towards those structures.
I live on, I live on Lake Road, which has, uh, it's almost single track coming down to the, to the, uh, intersection. And if I'm coming onto Lake Road and encounter somebody there, I have to wait on the busy, I'm not complaining, but I have to wait on the busy street, uh, while, uh, the, the other person exits. Or that person would have to back up and that, that would be not practical. But in this case, it's, it might be, or you're, you're suggesting that there's enough width for two cars side by side.
Yeah.
Also, Andrews Court is like a little tiny little loopy thing that no one ever goes on except these people.
That's a very helpful thing.
Right. In addition to these two lots and the, the other lots to the northwest that the applicant is also, um, attempting to permit right now, there's only a couple of other lots on Andrews Court, so it's not very, not very heavily trafficked.
Well, let's just be very clear. You approved a nine lot A and R that's mostly going to have duplexes on it, so. And, and this would be accessing four units that each have at least three spaces. So I think the occurrence of, of encountering is very likely.
Oh, okay. Well, uh, I have a question. Map 237 parcel 125, if, actually Eric, you could pull that up again. Says vacant. I must admit, I've never seen a lot named vacant before. Who owns that lot? Since part of your driveway, proposed driveway is going in there?
Um, so the applicant currently doesn't own any of the lots. He, um, the applicant is under purchase and sale agreement, but that lot is under common ownership with the owners of, the current owner of 9 and 11 Andrews Court. So the purchase and sale agreement does cover 7, 9, and 11. So in terms of, you know, that access easement for that driveway portion, it is relatively straightforward where, you know, um, it is under common ownership currently. It'll be a precondition of, of conveying out that lot.
Okay. And Greg, do you, could you weigh in on the, um, section 2. whatever it was about the width of the-
Sure. So in the subdivision regulations, that's the way it does read. Most of the common driveways that we've seen have typically been a width of 16 feet. That meets the minimum standard of a court, um, in our, our kind of small roadway system. Hierarchy of, of, based on the number of units that are being served. This, we have not heard a response yet from the engineering department, and I'm just curious, based on the activity at the commission la, last night, do you anticipate that there'll be additional information provided from a stormwater perspective for, um, the common driveway? Because essentially, all we have is the detail, um, and no real documentation of, of what the swales to handle.
Yeah, we, we do expect additional information in terms of, of stormwater. I will note that the common driveway is entirely outside of the, the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction. But of course, it, um, I think I did mention this, but to obtain a building permit for, you know, either structure and the driveway, we will have to submit those calculations to the, the engineering department to be approved prior to, uh, being able to construct any of this. So, um, I do believe that they're forthcoming to the Conservation Commission, but, you know, most certainly they will be forthcoming to the, the environment, to the, um, engineering department.
So to clarify, it is required to be 16 feet and they're asking for a variance to 14?
So the requirement is actually 25.
Oh, alright.
What has been typically granted, um, is 16 feet, which is reasonable, um, for two cars to pass.
What about the fire access?
I'm sorry?
What about fire access?
That's, we also don't have response from the fire department. Um, I think, you know, there are some limitations here in terms of the, the length of roadway. But how they would access the site would clearly have to be, um, from the south. But the fire department will also have to look at access.
So can we act on that until we know?
I, I think we should have that information. I think it's just going to facilitate the applicant going forward as they move to the building permit application as well, um, if this is, the drainage aspect is, is resolved, um, as well as, um, comment from the fire department.
And I guess just on the, the width, I mean, is the topography that encumbered that we can't get to a 16 foot width or?
I would have to probably discuss that with, with the engineer. I know that it does, you know, slope pretty considerably downhill from, southeast towards the, towards the northwest. I, I, I don't know whether or not they could add those additional two feet without impacting, you know, the layout or, or, you know, the structure or the, the construction itself. I don't know.
I guess follow up to that, then, I mean, is, do we have a sense of the profile, the grade?
So there is a detail, um, on the site plan that shows the
Can't see it, huh?
The profile.
Okay. There it is. Okay. Just to make sure it wasn't 12 and a half percent. Yes.
That the 18, I mean, the 16 you referring to, is that paved area or is that flat area altogether? You know, like if you had a 14 foot driveway with a foot on either side.
Yeah, so, so the fire access standard is 20 feet clear. And what we've seen variation wide is, is 16 with, with a drivable surface of a shoulder. We've seen 18 with one foot shoulder. So, uh, the fire access standard is, is typically for subdivision or for roadway. The Andrews Court improvements were improved to a 20 foot width pave, um, you know, as this proposal came through. So again, typically, a 16 foot paved is what, um, the fire chief is looking for for access.
Sounds like we should continue this until the next planning board meeting. The special permit process, still we get the- The special permit process, still we get the information from the fire department and the stormwater stuff.
Well, and also, I, it's a suggestion that you approach the engineer to see if we can get to that 16 feet, and so we're not wasting everybody else's time. If the answer is no, then, you know, have to figure something out.
Yep, okay.
I make a motion that we continue the common driveway special permit application for 9 and 11 Andrews Court to our next scheduled meeting of June 26.
Motion, I need a second.
So moved.
You have a motion by Jane Ramsen, second by Doug Cook. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Welcome, welcome to the fray. Just my agenda. Okay, so, other business discussion of section 5.16 Village Development Overlay District.
So, the sub, the housing subcommittee met last week, I believe it was, and we discussed the Village Development Overlay District and its intent and its usability. And the subcommittee, I'm reporting as the chair of the subcommittee, the subcommittee decided to recommend to the planning board that we repeal the, or that we set in motion a repeal of the VDOD for a couple of reasons. One is it's never been used despite being on the books for 21 years. Two, it was, it was complicated and, and requires multiple layers of approval versus a conventional plan. The existing OSRD and cluster ordinance have a similar purpose, but they're more clear and effective, and at least the cluster has seen some use. It applies to only a small portion of Ward 5-2 versus citywide. It has some conflicts with our inclusionary ordinance, and repealing it clears the way for a more effective streamlined zoning that actually supports Gloucester's housing and conservation goals. But, of course, only a few of us were there at the subcommittee meeting, so we're happy to hear any thoughts of any other planning board members.
Thank you, Jane. So, this one haunted us a little bit, and I think we, you know, had discussions after the first application of, after 21 years, you know, and just to fill in, there's provisions within that that weren't trying to be pursued, if my recollection is correct, right? And so that sort of triggered the question of reviewing this, and I would support the subcommittee's recommendation to restart the repeal process.
I agree.
So, the only thing I would add to a little bit of the context, and this is something that, you know, we've talked about, you know, developing that database of, of development, particularly in this corridor, you've seen numerous common driveway and A&R applications along this corridor when that option was available. I think it also comes down to that question of threshold size of properties where, where it makes sense. There are only a few in these, in this corridor that are probably of, of size that could go through the exercise to determine whether this was a, you know, an application vehicle for, for development or not. I think also highlighting that there were things that were identified, if there was interest, you know, from, from application, number of applications perspective, that would, would have needed to be set up, that never came to fruition. The idea of the density bonus associated with the Village Development Overlay District was really around preserving open space, as we've had a number of discussions about recently, and really having a sending area and a receiving area. That, that, that kind of sending area was never formally set up. There was the idea of having kind of a, a form of a, a land trust to help manage that process, which never occurred. And then probably most telling was going through the preliminary exercise of reviewing the application of it, and it certainly didn't seem like the proposal was what was intended or anticipated from the board's perspective. So, again, I think there's a lot of language there were, that we struggled with, with the applicant to try to understand the interpretation of it. I think the board was pretty clear in its interpretation of it, but it just didn't seem to, to play out the way that it had been anticipated. So, I would tend to agree that there's some focus on the, on the subcommittee to, you know, try to produce the outcome that the board is looking for that's in the public interest, and, and this ordinance is just not one that's, that's kind of been realized.
Just as a practical matter, this ordinance made the planning board the special permit granting authority, so it didn't require a city council permit, and that was very clear to the applicant, the first applicant of this ordinance, that they didn't want to go to city council, and they didn't want to use the density credits, because they just wanted us to vote. So, I mean, not to say it's right, wrong, or indifferent, but that's, again, a little bit of that background. So, thank you, Jane.
Right. And, and in contradiction with actually the stated purpose of the, of the VDOD. Right. So, what would be next steps if we decide to initiate a repealing? I've never done that before.
If you were to initiate, it would be someone would make a motion to recommend to repeal section 5.16 Village Development Overlay District. That would be forwarded to the city council to be referred, and we would have a public hearing, planning and development would review it, and it would go back to the city council for a public hearing to repeal.
Does anyone else have anything to add before I make a motion? Nope? Okay. I move that the planning board, what, initiate, repeal, recommend?
Initiate a zoning amendment to repeal section 5.16.
What Greg said.
I have a motion by Jane Ramsen, I need a second.
So moved.
Second by Doug Cook. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Thank you.
Can I assume then, as this goes forward, that then staff writes some kind of report that documents why the?
Yes, I will, I will work with Jane to kind of put together that recommendation to the city council so they understand the rationale of, of why it's being proposed to be repealed.
We have minutes from May 15.
I read them and thought they were great. Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you, Catherine. Any other comments or questions from planning board members? Very none, all accept a motion to approve the minutes of May 15, 2025.
So moved.
Motion by Jane Ramsen.
Second.
Second by Steve Yost. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? We have one abstention, Mr. Henry. Okay. There's that tricky time of the night. This is when we spend 45 minutes talking about something else other than just going home.
As he, as he looks at me. Nope, I need to leave. But I will just report that the Housing Subcommittee is now taking up reviewing the OSRD, the open space residential design, and the cluster zoning ordinances for commonalities, differences, what works, what doesn't, and discussing whether we want to propose either a amendment to one of the ordinances or a new ordinance that replaces both of them.
Accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Cook steps in, second.
Second.
I have a motion by Doug Cook, second by Sean Henry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.